Clerk Green, would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
She's in the hallway.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Brinkwave.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Nine zero.
I'm here.
Thank you.
We called your prompt.
Our Mayor Tisdale is out of town on a much deserved vacation, and so I am Alderman Rainey, and I am Mayor Pro Tem for this evening, unfortunately. So, first item on our agenda is the public announcements by the mayor, and we just want to announce that July is National Park and Recreation Month. So, City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have our annual recycling fair coming up. Jim Mayworm, our Assistant Director of Public Works, is here with all the details. Jim, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, Mr. Manager, Jim Mayworm, Assistant Director of Public Works, operations and maintenance. I just wanted to remind everybody that this coming Saturday, July 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon is our fourth annual recycling fair. This includes a lot of green vendors. We'll have an opportunity to rub elbows and let them explain different things to us, as well as some heavy equipment from the Public Works Department, where kids can get up and touch a truck. This year, in response to the overwhelming enthusiasm we had for collections last year, be that the electronics recycling and the paper shredding, we're going to start that portion an hour earlier with the hopes that we can serve the people faster. We've also made some other adjustments to the whole program to be able to accommodate those people. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. It's a mouthful.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I want to first thank Mr. Mayworm for the great job cleaning up Central Street after the parade on Thursday. I couldn't even tell a day later that there had been a parade. So, thank you very much to you and your crews.
Absolutely.
And then my question was about the electronics, is really a warning that last year the line snaked around the whole high school campus, and it was...
Yes, yes.
So, get there early and maybe plan to push a car around the block for a while.
Yeah, and that's...that was to the point. We took notice of that, and we've made quite a few operational changes. You know, we're starting that portion an hour earlier, so we can get the line moving. Unbeknownst to us, when we were busy setting up, we already had about a 45-minute backlog before we even opened the doors, which was quite a surprise. So, we took note, and we're making some changes to accommodate. We're also going to have porters running up and down the line looking for people that just have single items, like maybe a box of shred, just a box of paper to shred, or a bag of batteries. I encountered a lot of that last year. And we can just simply take that from the people and just bring it ourselves back to the main cloud, and they can move on their way and enjoy their Saturday. Unless, of course, they want to come for the fair, which they're more than willing to, and we'll get them in. So, we hope we don't have that situation again this year.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is going to get a little complicated here. Next is citizen comment.
No, 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 no.
A what? No?
City clerk.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Oh, I'm sorry. Communications by the city clerk, it's right here.
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm sorry. I'm new at this.
All right. I'm standing for this. I just received a petition from a group of 153 signatures wanting to stop the Harley Clark Mansion and Lighthouse Beach sale. They say they want to keep it accessible to the... They want to keep it accessible to the public, so that it would not deter them from enjoying the Lighthouse Beach or the Arts Center. The petition was made up by a couple of youngsters, who then went and passed it around, but they understand that there's another petition coming as well. My second announcement... Pass it down this way. Pass it down this way. What I've just passed out to the council members and the...and DAS is a paper from the count...statements from both the Evanston City Code, as well as the Illinois compiled statutes, to the Mayor, Pro Tem, Alderman, City Manager, Supervisors, Middle Management, Legal Department, and Staff. It has become very apparent that the air must be cleared concerning the functions of the city clerk's office. From the City Code, the functions of the city clerk shall be that the city clerk is elected to office for a four-year term, or appointed by the mayor if they...if the position is vacant. The city clerk shall issue notices of regular and special meetings of the council. The city clerk shall receive all petitions and communications addressed to the council, shall deliver all ordinances, resolutions to the mayor, for his or her charge, shall furnish minutes to the council members, shall also act as a township clerk with no additional compensation, shall be the custodian of keeper of all books, all records, all ordinances, resolutions, papers, and both of the city and town, shall attend all meetings of the council, and keep a full record, a full record, of its proceedings. From the Illinois compiled statutes, all ordinances passed by the council shall be deposited with the city or village clerk. The clerk shall sign all ordinances if the mayor signs them. At the last council meeting, the minutes from June 10th were pulled from the consent agenda by request of the First Ward Alderman. When it came to time to discuss why they were pulled, the City Manager stated, "Madam Mayor, Alderman Fisk asked me to work with the city clerk concerning the minutes for June 10th." He stated, "So, I will do that, and we'll come back." Two very important facts that the First Ward Alderman failed to realize, that the city clerk is an elected official. The city clerk does not work for the City Manager, nor does he work as a part of the City Manager's staff, nor is he a staff member. I'm finished.
Thank you, City Clerk. There's been an agreement between the Pivon Organization and the Balance of the Tenants Organization to divide up time 10 minutes each. I'll let you go over a little bit, but not much, in addition to the 45 minutes granted to Citizen Comment for everybody. So, I'm not sure if you've decided how to...who's going to go first, but either Pivon or the Balance of the Tenants Organization, would you like to come up to the microphone and make your presentation? Okay?
Ms. Weiss, why don't you start?
Is Jonathan in voice? Okay, great.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, there we go.
Should we turn out the lights? Will you be able to...
Sure, that'd be great. Yes, please.
Okay.
And then do I ask you, Jonathan, to...oh, great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, and Alderman. Thanks very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Maggie Weiss, and I'm Chair of the Noise Tenants Association, an organization that was formed 18 months ago when we understood there to be some changes in the wind regarding our business...I mean, our building. I have lived here 17 years. I'm here tonight as a taxpayer and Chair of the Association. I'm...I want to speak tonight because the lease agreement that's under consideration for the Noise Cultural Arts Center is not...does not appear to be in the best long-term interest for our town and our citizens, and even the physical structure, unless changes are made. As we've been consistently recommending for 18 months, we have a strong and viable alternative in the self-sustainability model, and we have lots of other ideas.
Thank you. The future of the Noise Cultural Arts Center hangs in the balance tonight and the rest of the month, and forever...how...forever, how long it takes to resolve this issue. As many of you know, thousands of people of all ages have made use of our unique facility since it was opened in 1984, where, in a very unique situation, many arts organizations of all kinds, visual and performing, exist and cooperate under one roof. This is almost unprecedented in the rest of the country. The Tenants Association has a proposal that makes the best use of this unique and effective and prosperous place. I'd like to make my case using three crucial points regarding the vision of the building, the risk in the deal, and the financials also. So, if we just take a look, I'm here to make this recommendation on behalf of the tenants, because we feel it provides the best outcome for the community and the city of Evanston. Three crucial points: fiscal viability, the risk involved in the project, and long-term vision. We believe that the self-sustainability model is aligned with the original mission of the building. The risks involved are great, both financially and structurally, to a renovation, and the financial look...excuse me, the financial outlook appears to be unsupportable. If we just think about vision, if you go to the Noise Cultural Arts Center website, it explains that the Noise Cultural Arts Center is a model of basically what I've just stated, the commitment to art is a vital social, historical, and economic component in our community. We believe it's worth continuing, because the Noise Tenants have fulfilled the vision and thrived in that space for 29 years and counting. The Pivon Plan compromises the above vision by lowering the building revenue and devoting 40 percent of the building to one tenant. We also believe that the self-sustainability model is the best alternative option. We would maintain tenant diversity, the tenant rents exceed building expenses year after year after year, and the surpluses build capital reserve fund to cover repairs and any kind of renovations. There's a lot of risk involved that can't be evaluated very easily, and I know you all have a colossal amount of paperwork that you have to sort through when you're considering various projects and improvements. Pivon's an outstanding contributor to the Noise Tenants...excuse me, the Noise Cultural Arts Center and the Tenants Association. However, with help from the community, from various financial professionals, it should be acknowledged that Pivon and the project have some weaknesses. The organization has limited experience with theater production on the scale that they will be attempting. Looking at the financials in the past and present, Pivon has limited assets to bring to the project, and they are of modest financial strength. The other complications besides fiscal risk are relative to the building. Everybody here who's done any kind of renovation knows that usually things run over budget. The conversion of an older occupied building is quite rare in the development of performing arts space. Most projects, in fact, all projects that we could look at in the past 20 years that have been done in the Chicago metropolitan area have used vacant lots or vacant buildings. It has...no project we can find has ever been done in an occupied building. You may wonder why that matters. Well, the big word this week is asbestos. Some of you may know that the report has been completed, it has not been released yet. We do know there is asbestos in the basement, and we do know that it can be contained when there isn't a renovation, pretty easily. In fact, in some...to some extent, it has been already. What we're worried about is that this 100-year-old building has 18-inch walls in some places, 12-foot walls in others, and that the Pivon Plan proposes to remove the entire first floor of the southern end of the building. If there is asbestos, which is highly likely, we've been told, that means it would be airborne while the building is occupied. We believe that creates an incredible risk to the people who are currently working in the building. We also believe that it's an unstated risk, because in the lease, all overages and all extra expenses regarding asbestos removal will be on the shoulders of the city of Evanston, not on the organization leading the project. Then there's another detail that can't be written into the lease agreement that you have. I couldn't find it anywhere. But also, over the last 20 years, we have evaluated projects in suburbs and in the city, and we cannot find any project that does not include a parking allowance in their per-seat cost estimate. So, what this means is, in the financials that you have, there is no parking information, there is no allowance for any accommodation for parking. Those of you who are familiar with the Cultural Arts Center know there are precious few parking spaces, surely not enough to accommodate the 30,000 people per year that Pivon is hoping to bring through with their new entrepreneurial theater plan. So, that's a grave concern. But also, in evaluating project...finished project costs broken down in the Chicago metropolitan area, there is no organization that has had a per-seat cost as low as Pivon's per-seat cost. We...our concern is that it is underestimated, and that the benefits of the program are Lastly, of the three points I'd like you to take home tonight, in addition to maintaining a vision and the risks involved, I'd like to present some numbers regarding the economics and financial outlook regarding the project. I have used the best possible outcome for all the estimates for Pivon, and what this means in your...in your documents is that I've included the best possible community service, the best...the results for the Fleetwood Jordan, other soft costs for community service are all counted to the maximum amount. That...that said, if we look on the 50-year period line in the center of the slide, the Pivon proposal brings in, over the next 50 years, $4 million, just over $4 million for the city of Evanston. If we maintain...or if we launch the self-sustainability model for the Noise Cultural Arts Center, the Tenants Association will bring in $8.5 million. And while we're doing that, some other things will be happening. You may remember that last June, you passed a resolution that allowed the Noise Tenants Association to have a say in the management of the building. Most of it is advisory, but one of the things that did appear to have some teeth is that we would be able to have a say in generating funds and making sure that there is a capital reserve fund that the surplus from our building would build, and with which we would be able to exercise repairs and renovations. However, with the structure of the Pivon deal, there will be no surplus monies ever for the next 50 years and possibly beyond, because of the structure of the financial deal. We've repeatedly asked the city for third-party review of the financial structure of the deal, to no avail. However, we found several financial professionals willing to read and evaluate the Pivon documents. Tonight, I just want to mention Bob McGee, who's a professor...a Chair Professor of Accounting at Northwestern University. He's not here tonight, he was at the June 3 meeting. I have a letter from him that he has allowed me to share, and I will include that in my packet when I am finished speaking, which I'll pass out. And I'm...also have a friend, David Polster, who's here this...this evening. He's a very experienced accounting professional, a CPA, and some other letters that I don't remember. But most impressively, he's Vice President of ASAP Software for Dell most recently in his professional career. So, he's got the chops to look at these numbers and tell us some interesting and helpful things about them. And what I want to explain, some of you may have seen information alluding to the number of 23 million in lost revenue. That 23 million is an appreciated value for the rent that will be given up by the city leasing the entire 40 percent of space of the Noise Cultural Arts Center. I don't want to use those future numbers, because all of the documents that you have have today's numbers for the expenditures. So, all these numbers up here are in today's money. The 80...8.5 million, that's in today's dollars.
Weiss?
Yes.
Just so you know, your 10 minutes are up, so...
Great.
Could you wind it up?
I sure can.
Okay. I'm not going to stop you, but wind it up.
Thanks, I will. Assuming the best possible outcomes for all of Pivon figures, the cumulative benefit to the building and the city is less than half of what the self-sustainability model provides. Claims made on the return on investment in lease documents do not hold up in outside We feel that that's...that's pretty huge. We especially feel, in light of the recent downgrade in our bond rating, that we need to exercise more restraint, and we would love to see any possible changes to the Pivon Plan that would make it more viable for the city and for the future.
That's a good end.
So, I would like you to please take home the number with you, that if you vote to advance this proposal to July 22nd, that you're going to be agreeing, if you take action on that next...two Mondays from now, that you're going to be agreeing that it's okay for this proposal to go through, for Pivon to continue to use 40 percent of a building while paying less rent than they've ever paid while occupying the Noise Cultural Arts Center. Thanks for your attention. Please keep in mind the vision, risk, and financials involved. I have backups for any information I've presented here, which I would happily do. Thank you very kindly, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Can you just hand it, and we'll pass it down? Because we want to move on with this one. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Brown, and I'm the Executive Director of the Pivon Theater Workshop. Last month, on June 3rd, we addressed the Human Services Committee with more than 70 people who came with us to express their support of Pivon, our proposal, and the work we do in our community. We felt, in the interest of your valuable time, the fact that this was just an introduction, that there are many other issues tonight just as important, we asked them to stay home. Although some have still chosen to come tonight, others have written to you, they have spoken, and they have emailed. I hope that sufficiently expresses to you that Pivon, over the last 42 years, we have devoted to Evanston and beyond, has a community which has been touched and nurtured by the work we do, and they want to see change. Two years ago, it was communicated to us and to Evanston that the buildings we have come to see as icons for the arts community were failing, and there wasn't funding to renovate them. Two years later, the future of noise is still uncertain. As a community, we have talked about building exciting new buildings in downtown Evanston, but it still just remains that, an ongoing discussion, and we're still looking for a solution and a plan. Two years ago, we let city staff and the mayor know that we were moving out. With no plan for improvements in the building and no funding, we saw our facility as untenable. They said no. They asked us, as an anchor tenant, to come up with a plan that would make sense not only for today, but for 50 years from today. As this building doesn't have a long-term plan, this was an exciting first step toward making some important changes to the sustainability of this landmark. We proposed working with the city in partnership, where we each make financial sacrifices, and we each make an investment to improve this building together. We offered to pay for our own improvements with the help of a partial loan from the city, while making above and beyond contributions to not only the rest of the building, but in many other ways as well. We would share space with Fleetwood Jordan, improve space in the basement we wouldn't even occupy, improve the electrical and HVAC, contribute to a capital fund for the rest of the building, and while we have always done community service, this plan allows us to expand it further by offering space and scholarships to individuals and nonprofits in need. In return, we asked for help with the rent, so that we could do all of the above successfully. While paying the loan back with interest, the city would help us with rent, and after the loan was repaid, we would resume paying rent. This is not an uncommon practice at all, and it happens all over the country. It happens in towns where the leadership understands the fundamental need to work in partnership with its arts organizations in order to flourish. From Lake Forest with the Ragdale Foundation, to Chicago with Looking Glass Theater, cities understand that to make positive change to the infrastructure of the arts, both parties must make an investment. This is further detailed in the attachment in your packet submitted by the city's own Economic Development Coordinator. In the end, with Pivon's proposal, the city of Evanston retains ownership of its historic property, now vastly improved, and Pivon, a nonprofit, has brought resources to the table, such as pro bono professional services otherwise unavailable to a municipality, to make this project happen at a significantly reduced cost and within a much faster timeframe. Additionally, Pivon will have paid back the entire loan with interest, and has fundraised on top of everything mentioned before to pay for the improvements. Included in your packets that I've given you are the floor plans for the renovation. In the recently commissioned Evan Start study, the majority of those who participated stated that facilities in our community, the lack thereof, and the fact that many are decaying, is the number-one obstacle that keeps the arts from serving our community well. Chief complaints included: lack of space, space that is too small, lack of venues for fundraisers, lack of space to perform, lack of lobbies and community gathering spaces, and lack of any movement toward changing that. We too suffer from these same issues, and we believe our proposal makes one giant leap toward great improvement. These plans reflect years of thoughtful planning, have been vetted through a capital campaign study, and represent a thorough space analysis of our programming and administrative needs. Additionally, our team of professionals includes the architect of record for the Goodman Theater downtown. The basement, currently supported by beams, would be reinforced, studios would be larger, free of falling debris, pipes, exposed wires, and hazardous materials. In fact, an additional studio would be created, making more space in the building for use. It would also house one of our classrooms we recently moved, at the request of the Tenants Association, from the second floor to the basement, to provide more available space on the second floor. The first floor features a flexible theater, which can accommodate various configurations to support theater, music, dance, and even event space for fundraisers. Additionally, expanded offices would finally house our full and part-time staff, which last year was just under 50 people. The second floor consists of upgraded classrooms outfitted with seating and lighting, so as to accommodate intimate salon theater performances in addition to rehearsal space and classrooms for our training center. While Pivon's programming and that of Fleetwood Jordan would take up a significant portion of the year, there would be sufficient time available for other performing groups to lend diversity to performances at Noise. Music, dance, and other theater companies currently without a performance space could have access to a venue, which would make offerings in this town even more plentiful. Businesses along Noise, some currently struggling with an inconsistent flow of customers, would benefit from an increase of steady year-round support for their business. It's been two years of negotiations, countless hours of discussions with the city, tenants, community members, and constituents, and numerous presentations to members of the city council. For two years, we have delayed construction on three occasions, and have put the planning of our production seasons on hold with the hope that a decision would be made on our proposal. How can we plan if we don't know what space we will occupy? The time has come. We believe we have exercised all due diligence in this process. We ask that you, our city's leadership, no longer delay on taking action. We at Pivon have stuck with this for a very long time, because we value our community. Evanston has been a good home to us for the last 42 years, and we hope to stay here for the next five decades. Now is the time to make a decision and to move this arts community forward with whatever the future holds. Thank you.
Distinguished members of the city council, my name is Joel Fremuth, and I have the honor of addressing you tonight as the President of the Board of the Pivon Theater Workshop. This has been a long conversation, often contentious, and one in which we believe the level of rhetoric has risen far above a reasonable proportion to the importance of the transaction. In short, the Noise Cultural Arts Center, as it currently stands, does not fit our needs or our vision for the future. As President of the organization, it is my responsibility to ensure that we are on track to meet our needs and fulfill our vision. These obligations are made far easier when we can create mutually beneficial arrangements, such as we believe is the case here. First, Pivon is not asking for, nor being granted, nor gifted, any money. Pivon is requesting a loan from the city, which makes a certain sense, given that the city is the landlord and owner of the building we are proposing to renovate. Pivon is paying interest on that loan, and the loan and the interest does not preclude Pivon from paying rent. So, Pivon will be paying for the opportunity to fix up the city's building, and will be paying rent all the while. There have been numerous accusations that our architects are not good enough, and that this project will go over its budget and/or timeline. Even if we disregard the credentials of the sources of these accusations, which are certainly worthy of closer examination, we are not going to get into a discussion on the merits of our experts. We trust that you, the members of this distinguished council, the mayor, the city manager, and the numerous staff members of the city of Evanston, involved for more than two and a half years, have deemed our experts credible, and our...and our plans reasonable. More importantly, and more to... More importantly and more to the issue, under this plan, as with all loans, cost overruns and timelines are the sole responsibility of the Piven Theater Workshop. So what is the city's liability? Evanston's liability is limited to the amount of the loan, or roughly nine-tenths of 1% of Evanston's 2013 fiscal budget. And to further limit your liability, there are numerous safeguards built into the document, the loan document. What are the benefits to the City of Evanston? Before we delve into projections, we have used the same methodology that was utilized by the Evan Starts report submitted to this body in March of this year. The projections to be cited were found using the Evan Starts methods with conservative projections. Our projections are more conservative than those utilized by the Economic Development Coordinator that are presented to you in the packet in front of you. Over the next 25 years, in addition to interest paid of approximately $725,000, the City of Evanston will reap economic benefits from a liquor tax which has not existed heretofore, community spillover effects, and retention of the building improvements. In total, the City of Evanston will reap just under $10 million from those factors alone. The whole project returns over 350% on the initial loan. And just to remind you, these are estimates that are based on projections and methods approved and trusted by the City of Evanston, the Evanston Community Foundation, and the Evanston Arts Council. This project should be passed because it furthers Evanston's commitment to the arts without distracting the city from more urgent priorities. We believe in the arts. We believe that studying the arts is important and that being involved in the arts can make society better. However, we live in the real world, and we have not lost perspective on the size or the impact of this deal. That is the reason we are proposing this project in the manner we are discussing. Piven bears most of the responsibility. The city is not distracted from its responsibilities, and yet we are able to improve the general quality of the arts community simultaneously. For over two years, we have negotiated and compromised. What you have in front of you is a proposal that represents the fruit of those negotiations. It represents the best of a public-private relationship. Regardless of what you decide, we have been honored to be a part of this process. Our founder, Joyce Piven, says, "The energy to build is greater and more courageous than the energy to destroy." We have put forth tremendous energy in an effort to create a space worthy of our future and a center worthy of Evanston's commitment to the arts. We have, at every turn, chosen not to entertain distractions. And in that process, we have already created something special. We'd like to see the Noi's Cultural Center be our home well into the future, as it has been for over four decades. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we're going to move to the sign-up sheets for citizen comment, and I have one thing to tell you. There are 53 people signed up. 16 of those people are talking about an issue that has nothing to do with tonight's meeting. So if those 16 people who are here to talk about Harley Clark would like to wait until it's on the agenda or a meeting where we're not so preoccupied, that will give the Piven people, the gun people, et cetera, people with items on the agenda, a minute and 21 seconds. Otherwise, people are going to be speaking for 50 seconds only. You can't tell us anything we don't already know in 50 seconds. So perhaps those on the Harley Clark non-agenda items would like to yield to those who have business here tonight. Is there an objection to that? Hearing none. Alderman Fisk.
Madam Mayor Protam, I would suggest that we give everyone at least a minimum of one minute to speak tonight, not 50 seconds.
Including the Harley Clark people.
Whoever wants to speak, they've come out tonight.
You know, that's just fine. And I'm sure that the Piven people have no problem, or the gun people have no problem being short-changed. But having said that, first, Jack Lerman. You have one minute, and the clock is ticking. Here's an idea of what we're going to do. Jack Lerman, Sheila Odenger, Marie from Dewey, can't pronounce your last name, and Carl Kernan, also from Dewey. Could you line up so we don't waste any time?
I'll pass them out as soon as... My name is Jack Lerman.
We'll start when you start.
Don't worry, I'm not going to start until you start, Jack.
Okay, thank you.
We have our total attention.
My name is Jack Lerman.
Do you want to hand it out first or second?
I'll hand it out afterward.
Just hand it to Judy, and she'll pass it down. Okay.
Very important for you to see it, to refresh your memory. As a tenant, I have included in this attachment 202 signatures rejecting the Piven proposal. I have more coming, so I gather up right now. Also included, and this is what you have right now, to, I'm going to cut this short, to refresh your memories, are the 210 and 211 income tax statements. The 210, in 210, there's a loss of $85,629, and a loss of $64,342 in 211. As a taxpayer, I have a financial concern. I am questioning the realistic evaluation of the Piven's ability to come up with the money to support the future. Have the city and the aldermen looked perhaps at their...
Jack, unfortunately, your time's up.
...last five years. This is 202 signatures, and you've got the rest...
That's very important. Thank you very much.
But thank you very much. Thank you.
You know, this is a little embarrassing. Some of us have been here since 5 o'clock, but what else can we do? We're going to be going on all night. So Sheila, welcome.
First of all, I'd like to say that I think that the speakers for the Piven Theater were absolutely eloquent, but there are some very hard facts that they did not address. Neither the Piven Theater nor the City of Evanston has had any independent professional assessment made of the Piven proposal plan. Within the last few weeks, there have been independent assessments made by two highly-qualified professionals. These individuals have carefully reviewed the 350 or so pages of the proposal made public by the city. The result of these evaluations show that there are serious concerns about many portions of the Piven proposal. One of these professionals is a woman named Carol Bass, who is a certified project manager. The other, as was mentioned earlier, is Robert McGee, a professor of accounting and management at Northwestern University. Both have taken the time to write detailed letters outlining the main points of the proposal and detailing their many flaws and weaknesses.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time's up.
One more sentence, please. These letters have been made available to the mayor, the city manager, and all of you aldermen. These letters should be required reading for all of you before any vote on this proposal is taken. It actually should be required reading for every taxpayer in the City of Evanston. Thank you.
Hi, I think most of you know why I'm here. Marjorie Fajara, pediatrician at Stroger Hospital and here on behalf of Moms Demand Action Chicago Chapter. I have listened with great interest to the arguments on each side of the assault weapon ban debate, both nationally and locally, and two things have struck me. The first is that those opposing the ban usually mention that mass shootings are a rare occurrence and that these weapons are rarely used in crimes. But in reality, we have no idea what the numbers are, and that's because in 2003, the United States Congress enacted the T-Hard Amendment, which has prohibited the ATF from sharing information with the public about guns used in crimes. Not to mention the inability of people like myself in public health being unable and silenced doing public health research involving firearms. Inevitably, in this debate, someone threatens a lawsuit. The motive, I believe, is to intimidate. It's to intimidate municipalities like ours from enacting assault weapons bans. And after all, the stakes for the gun lobby is very high. I'm almost done. Assault weapons are their new cash cow. The weapons are expensive, the accessories are also expensive, including scopes, lasers, lights, and one sales exec with a leading gun manufacturer says, "These are Legos for grown men."
I have to stop you.
Okay.
Sorry. I really apologize.
Good evening. I'm Carl Kerman, Evanston resident over 20 years and father of, former Army officer and graduate of VMI. I urge you, in spite of Second Amendment rights, to vote to ban assault weapons. As Dr. Fajara pointed out, these are the cash cow of the gun industry, and they're doing for the gun industry what Camel Joe did for the cigarette industry, which is breeding the next generation of shooters. That makes my concern, as a father of four, all the more compelling for the accidental injury or death from misuse. As to the talking points of the gun lobby on these being identical to other semi-automatic weapons, as an Army officer, I will tell you, they are designed, modeled based on features used for close-quarter combat, say, a dark movie theater or school building, where firing difficult shots from behind concealment or cover is essential in giving the shooter an effective rate of deadly fire. Thank you.
I want to ask Leslie Brown and Joel Fremuth, do you want to speak? Okay, all right. So the next few people are Jen Green, Bonnie Wilson, Michael, who lives at 3036 Central...
Moran.
Moran, and John Crish... Crishler Jr., John Jr., from Brummel Street. Just give your name and address, and you have one minute.
Good evening, I'm Michael Moran. I am living at 3036 Central Street. I'm the father of one 21-month-old beautiful baby girl, and I have a second daughter on the way, she's due in two weeks. And you might think because of that, that I'm in favor of this assault weapons ban, but I am actually adamantly opposed to it. I'm not here to represent the NRA. In fact, the statistics I'm going to read to you are not from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, they're from the FBI. In 2011, 9,100, 9,200 people were killed, homicides from guns. Only 323 used rifles, of which the weapons we're talking about here tonight are a subset. In 2011, 485 people were killed using clubs or hammers. More people are killed using hands and feet than are killed with rifles in a year. Falling out of bed constitutes the death of 600 people, and there hasn't been a murder using these types of weapons, according to the Roundtable, in 20 years. So what exactly are we trying to do here tonight, besides make ourselves feel good? Because that's all that's going to happen if you ban these weapons, which aren't assault rifles, they're semi-automatic rifles. I was a commissioned officer, I was an infantryman, I carried an assault rifle.
Time is up.
I did not carry a semi-automatic rifle.
Time is up. I've given everybody one minute and 20 seconds.
I got you, I made my point, thank you.
Thank you. Jen Green. Okay, Bonnie, evidently Jen Green is not here. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here as Evanston Township Assessor, just because this is a public service that I'm offering right now. This is just a reminder to Evanston taxpayers that your real estate taxes are due on August the 1st, and I just want to make sure that your exemptions, that you receive all the exemptions that you're entitled to receive, especially the seniors over 65, who have to... You remember, you have to renew your senior exemption every year to make sure you... Just make sure you have your senior exemption. Look on the left side of your bill, on the bottom, there's exemptions, and make sure you have that bill, you have that exemption. Also, the tax sale for 2011 will be on August 6th. You can still pay the bill by August 1st online at the Cook County Treasurer's website, or you can pay at any Chase Bank until July 26th with your original tax bill. If you did not receive your exemptions, you can go back three years. So please call the Evanston Township Assessor's office at 847-332-2465. If you have any questions about your tax bill, please give us a call. Thank you.
Is John from Brummel?
I'm John.
Okay. Jess Sherborne? Sherborne? Then Todd Kennedy and Eric Jacobson.
Hi there, I'm Jess Sherborne. My family and I live a few doors down from the property at 1622 Forest, the subject of the special use. So someone whose neighborhood will be significantly affected by the applicant's plans, I urge you to deny the special use permit for a second B&amp;B on the same block. There are only six buildings on that block of Forest Place, and if a second B&amp;B is established there, fully one-third of them will be commercial. It clearly changes the character of the neighborhood from residential to mixed use. Regardless of the quality of workmanship and architecture, the applicant is establishing a de facto hotel complex in a residential block. I believe this undermines the residential character of the neighborhood, which would damage the quality of life for my family and the other families that made their homes there. The special use permit essentially allows the applicant to pursue his hobby to the detriment of his neighbors, and as such, I think it sets an unacceptably low bar for special use permits, one that I don't think many of us would like to see used in our neighborhoods. Thanks.
Todd Kennedy?
Good evening, my name is Eric Jacobson. I live at 1422 Dempster. I lived there with my wife for 33 years. I lost my brother to gun violence. There's a lot of talk about the Second Amendment rights. The government is charged to protect and to offer life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. I think life comes ahead of gun rights.
Todd? And then Eileen Soderstrom, and Mike Weissman, and Millie...
Thanks for having me. I'm Todd Kennedy, live in South Evanston. I don't want to give out my address if that's...
Well, you have to. Everybody does.
830 Reba Place.
Yeah. Just goes to the record.
All right. I just want to talk about the ordinance itself, since everybody's kind of not talking about the ordinance. This is right here, a semi-automatic rifle that has a capacity to accept a detachable magazine and has one of the, more of the following. So you're not banning semi-automatic rifles with detachable magazines, but you're banning those with the actual one or more of the attachments with it. Okay, so you can still have one of these weapons without the attachments. So AR-15, for example, take off the flash repressor, you don't need it unless you're firing at night. I mean, most shooters don't fire at night. Take off the barrel shroud, you don't need it. Take off the protruding grip, you don't need that. Take off the pistol grip, you can just put a full stock. Feinstein in California, she actually has a lot of bans there, and it kind of triggered an influx of stocks you can put on those rifles. So basically, what you have is the same exact gun, okay? Same mechanism, and it's still in accordance with this ban, you can still have it. So you're basically, this is doing nothing, other than taking little features out that are scary.
Todd, one minute and 20 seconds.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Eileen?
Hi, my name's Eileen Soderstrom. I live at 224 West Greenleaf in Chicago, just over the border. I was here two weeks ago when you had your first discussions about the proposed assault bet, and when, and the three things that I took away from that meeting was, the people against the ban first said they're going to sue you, and they're threatening you that they have lots of money. Our government isn't supposed to run by the people who have money.
Speak in.
They're supposed to be run by the laws that we put together to keep ourselves safe, and we shouldn't be threatened by money. The second thing that they said, which has been spoken earlier, is that it never happened here, we never had this. I say to you that on July 19th last year, the people of Aurora, Colorado would have said that, and on December 13th, the people of Newtown, Connecticut would have said that. The purpose of government isn't to act after terrible things happen, it's to put laws in place that prevent terrible things from happening. And the third thing that many people said was, "Well, this is my hobby. I like shooting guns at ranges and competitions." And I would say that the founding fathers did not create the Constitution and the Second Amendment to protect your favorite hobby. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Weissman? Hello?
Hi, thank you. My name's Mike Weissman. I live at 2N125...
I live at 2N125 Virginia, in unincorporated Glen Allen, in DuPage County. I'm not here as a resident, of course. I'm here because I represent the gun owners of Illinois, and in particular, the gun owners of Evanston in my role as Second Vice President of Illinois State Rifle Association. Now, I know, I understand that Evanston has a crime problem. I'm not ignorant in that. I actually attended the workshop that the mayor held several months ago that was overflowing from the meeting room into the gymnasium, okay? I was there, and I listened to all kinds of people talking about all kinds of programs, but I really didn't hear enough about crime control. But that's what there is here. There's a problem with crime caused by criminals and criminal acts. The guns that you're here talking about banning aren't the ones that are being held by criminals, because they're not going to turn theirs in. We're talking about putting restrictions on law-abiding citizens. I looked quickly at the ordinance. I noticed the one really thing that stands out for me is that, hey, it's all about cosmetic features. It's not about any kind of functioning. Read, it's right there in the ordinance. It's all about a list of cosmetic features of what to ban. Now, since these things were... Since these kinds of bans were coughed up in the U.S. Congress and in Cook County, we've got Supreme Court rulings that talk about a fundamental civil right. These are the commonly-held weapons of the people that are protected by those civil rights.
A minute, 20 seconds. Your time is up.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Millie?
Hi, my name is Millie Herzani.
Ellen Secoa is next.
My name is Millie Herzani. I'm at 5848 Maplewood in Chicago. I'm here to ask you, as a woman who has been stalked, harassed, followed, to please not infringe on my right to keep and bear arms. Please do not infringe on the constitutional amendments that you are sworn to uphold. Women still can't get certain jobs. Women make 75% of a man. We don't have the money to pay for taxes, fees, insurance, registrations on something that should be free. Please do not restrict gun ownership. Gun control and assault weapons ban will further make women second-class. We won't be able to freely defend ourselves. Please don't further render women defenseless. We have to protect ourselves from someone who is bigger than us and stronger than us, and no one should be treated as second-class. Your personal fear of guns are your own and only your fears. Someone here mentioned that life should become before the Second Amendment, but what about my life when I am stalked? I too am worried about the children, the children that won't be able to defend themselves. Guns don't kill people.
Ellen, your time is up.
People kill people regardless of how...
Your time is up. Okay, thank you. I mean, Millie, I'm sorry. Ellen is next, yes.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Kiyoka. I live at 736 Central. I know the Evanston City Council will do the right thing tonight. I know it. And I'm talking about the assault weapons ban. You will ban assault weapons. All of you know the public health emergency that is gun violence. You just need to read the paper. In my over-three decades as a pediatric healthcare provider, I have seen what guns do: death, dismemberment, unspeakable grief, the looks on the faces of those parents when I walk in that room to say, "I'm sorry, we did everything we could." Having weapons of war in a personal home is complete insanity, and everyone in this room knows that. Thank you.
The next four people, Joanna Pinsky, Carolyn Murray, Denise Stoneback, and Dr. Michael James.
Hi, my name is Joanna Pinsky, and I live at 1223 Grant Street. I'm the Artistic Director of Art Encounter and a tenant in the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, and I'm here just to support what Maggie said, but also to add another factor, which is that of community service. We have had a building that has housed many diverse arts groups, and they have made a big payment back to the city in terms of programs in schools and senior centers, art exhibits. Many have also worked with the police and the Restorative Justice Program, all sorts of concerts at one time, which we've now lost because we lost the tenant who... One of the tenants who provided those concerts, there probably are others. And I just wanted to emphasize that the 2013 program brings in $86,408.99. With the Piven proposal, this would be greatly reduced, and I'm here again to say how valuable the diversity in the arts has been. Thank you.
Joanna, thank you. Carolyn Murray?
Carolyn Murray, 1930 Gray. I remember when the president said gun violence, and I stood up with this picture, and I refused to sit down to protest all of the murders and all of the people that I met, that their children and their family members were killed with guns, assault weapons, and just terrible weapons. I had a dream last night that my son... He was sitting at the table, and he said, "Mom, I love you." And I was so happy. I was so happy. But I woke up. Justin could still be here, and I don't like to share this side of me, because you know that we have done prayer marches. The alderman and I talked this morning. We're getting ready for National Night Out next month, but this has got to end. It is just the beginning. The assault weapons is just the beginning. Please help us. Kathy is here with me. Please help us. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Protam, and Alderman of Evanston, my name is Denise Wang Stoneback, and I was born in Evanston. I'm a resident of Skokie. I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote in favor of an assault weapons ban. Assault weapons are made for war. With some of these high-capacity guns, you can shoot as many as 60 rounds in a minute, killing scores of people. In the shooting in Aurora, Colorado, the movie theater slaughter, the number of victims would likely have been much higher, except the shooter's assault weapon apparently jammed, limiting his ability to spray the audience with more deadly rounds of bullets. An assault weapon is not necessary for hunting. It isn't easily available like a handgun for self-defense. It is designed for one purpose: war. This is not about the Second Amendment, guns for protection or guns for hunting. We're talking about guns made for war that threaten national security. Assault weapons have become the weapon of choice among gangs. America's police chiefs know that assault weapons put the lives of their officers and citizens at risk, and that is why so many of them advocate in favor of a ban. Nowadays, assault weapons are being used, sold, and marketed for entertainment. I ask you to consider, is the desire of someone to use his or her...
Your time is up.
...so-called sporting rifle for entertainment more important than protecting the citizens of Evanston?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Michael James, 326 Callan. The question is, what is the purpose of a weapon of mass destruction in a civilian population? Bob Davis said that the Hook families can go to hell for infringing on our personal gun rights. The families can go to hell. And I say to him, "Each man's death diminishes me because I am involved in mankind, and therefore, never sin to know for whom the bell tolls. It tolls for thee." The bell is tolling for us as a society to protect our children, and if we don't, shame on us.
The next group, Rich Gerard, Carol Bass, totally unreadable to me, 17 Grove Street, whoever that person is, and Priscilla Giles. Rich Gerard is first. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, Protam, members of the City Council, I live at 1028 Austin Street in Evanston. My wife and I have lived there 17 years. We are strongly in support of the ordinance before you to ban assault weapons. Why are we supporting that ordinance and urging you to support for the reasons that have been alluded to here just previously? Thank you. We would appreciate a unanimous vote banning assault weapons.
Thank you. Carol Bass?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Carol Bass. I live in Evanston's First Ward at 800 Elgin Road, Unit 1003. I'm speaking tonight solely on my own behalf as a resident of Evanston and as an Evanston taxpayer. I'm a certified project manager and have been for the past 12 years. I'm taking like one paragraph out of my remarks. It is my understanding, from reading the documents and from discussion with the city manager, that under the provisions of the proposed lease and construction agreement, the Piven Theater Workshop could, at its own discretion and to its sole benefit, rent out its newly renovated state-of-the-art theater space to other organizations for up to 44 weeks per year. That during this time, while the theater space, which is very largely subsidized by the city of Evanston, and possibly going forward into the year 2063, Piven's community service required amount will remain at its current $2,013 equivalents of less than $9,000 per year. I don't think that this represents a value to the city of Evanston, and certainly not at a cost to the city of $25 million over a period of 50 years, as recently estimated by the Chicago Tribune. Thank you much.
Are you 17 Grove?
My name is Jordan Zoot. In addition to being a federal firearms licensee, I'm a Life NRA member. I am disgusted with the fact that I submitted a proposal that went to every member of the City Council to try to adopt what was a very reasonable compromise incorporating Section 985-1 through 9, as compared to 9814 into the city code to modify the bill that's in place. The difference between me as a federal firearms licensee is I've waived Fourth Amendment rights. And the difference between me and Bamberg, Murray, Davis, and Woodson is I'm not a gangbanger. I happen to be a law-abiding citizen, and I am frustrated at the fact that my rights are being disregarded because of community sentiment that's ineffective. Thank you.
Just so you know, Mr. Zoot, just so you know, the council has not yet discussed the ban, so you don't know what we're going to do. Next, Priscilla Giles, John... I think it's Winjiter, right? And then Joey Rogers. Good evening.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I live at 1829 Ashland in Evanston. There are nine people making decisions for the whole city of Evanston, the city, the rich, the poor, the old and young, the employed, unemployed, the peacemakers and the peacebreakers, the homeowners and the homeless, those who come to be entertained and those who entertain. And I just want to ask you to remember all of the people, all of the citizens of Evanston, each and every one of you, those people who are having difficulty coming into Fleetwood Jordan because the circular drive was taken away in name of beautification. Thank you.
Thank you. John from Noyes... Sorry. I'm sorry, can't read it.
1137 Noyes Street. I heard a new adjective this evening, which was failing, applied to the Noyes Building. Last time I was here, it was deteriorating. I simply want to remind the body that we were told several years ago, many years ago, that this building was in such a state of collapse that it would cost something like $80 million to make it livable. Somehow, and so we were supposed to tear it all down and sell the property at that point. Somehow, there was a fiscal crisis. They fixed the roof, and here we are in this building, lo and behold, without spending anything like what it would have cost to build a whole new hotel back then. The building is not failing. I have been up and down, in it and out. They built to last then. It might need a little coat of paint or something like that, but it is not failing. And the whole thing began with a wrong assumption there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joey Roger, Joel Siegel, I believe, Scott. You know who you are, Scott. Hi. Hi. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Joey Roger. I live at 1730 Hinman in Evanston. I want to thank the council and those who work for the city for making public safety one of your top five priorities for 2014. This is a chance to make it real. Violence is complicated. Preventing violence is very complicated. No one needs semi-automatic weapons in Evanston. Preventing them from being in our city is one step toward peace. Those who use them for shooting sport can keep them in a locker, someplace where their shooting range is, the way many of us keep tennis shoes in our lockers at the Y. They don't need to be kept in our home. It is written, blessed are the peacemakers, tonight the invitation before you is not only to accomplish your own goal of safety for all people in Evanston, but to join those who have moved our human community forward by taking courageous stands that move us all toward the yearn for peaceable city with safety for all of us. Thank you. Thank you. Joel?
Joel Siegel, 7000 Crawford Lincolnwood. I am the North Shore North Suburban Coordinator, Jews for Preservation of Firearms Ownership. I'm speaking on behalf of the Jewish gun owners of Evanston. Their word to you is no Nazi anti-gun laws in Evanston. What you have is an urban gang violence problem in Evanston, not a semi-automatic rifle problem. Don't waste your efforts and your residents' taxes defending a symbolic ordinance. Address the real problem with your resources, the urban youth gang problem here. And again, the Jews for Preservation of Firearms Ownership says, "Gun control is not kosher." Thank you.
It's great we let people from Lincolnwood speak at our council meeting. Next, we have Scott. I'm sorry, your last name.
Chesney.
Thank you.
Sorry. What do you name and address, you said?
Yeah.
312 North Rosedale Court. I actually live in Round Lake, but I work in Evanston, so I spend most of my time here.
We're happy to...
Obviously, I'm against a ban. You can tell by my shirt. All it is, is it's just a feel-good law. It doesn't do anything. Criminals do not follow laws. It's plain and simple. Harming law-abiding citizens' rights is not going to stop criminals from doing what they want to do. All of the massacres that have happened have all happened because people broke laws. It's not law-abiding citizens that are doing this. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have Madeline Decray, Clara Delgado, Nick Agnew, and Ilya... Starts with K, the last name, but I can't read it. Okay. Madeline, are you here? I don't see her. Okay. Claire Kelly Delgado?
My name is Claire Kelly. I live at 823 Colfax Street. I am extremely concerned about the possible selling off of public light front property, but I'm here this evening out of questions about ethics in our city government. I am here tonight to express concern about the appearance of conflicts of interest around the issue of the Hartley-Clark, as well as other related zoning issues. I recently wrote a letter, along with my neighbor Nick Agnew, to Mayor Tisdale and also to Alderman Mark Tendem. You all received a copy of this letter, and we wrote with a very straightforward request... And we wrote with a very straightforward request. We wrote requesting reassurance that our city government exercise ethical practices when it comes to council votes. I ask here tonight that these letters, all these exchanges, be recorded from July 6th through July 8th. In particular, we wanted reassurance that Alderman Tendem would recuse himself from any votes involving Mr. Pritzker and Tuwani Enterprises, since Mr. Tendem received financial donation of $1,000 from Mr. Pritzker. This really, recusing oneself in such a situation really is standard ethical protocol. Alderman Rainey responded to our letter. However, we haven't yet heard back from anyone else. Alderman Rainey responded by saying, quote...
Your time is up. One second. Okay. No, no, no. You know what?
This righteous indignation is really getting to me.
It is.
Such a response felt like you were trying to silence and stifle citizen participation on this issue.
I'm showing you that that's not true, because I'm gonna let you drone on while everybody will test away.
We asked that Alderman Tendem recues himself from any votes related to the Pritzker or Tuwani Enterprises. Thank you.
Take it to the Ethics Committee. Nick Agnew.
Thank you, Claire. My name is Nick Agnew at 819 Colfax Street. I would like to acknowledge my neighbor and friend, Claire Kelly Delgado, the winner of a Teacher of Excellence at Evanston Township High School, where she has been a teacher for 20 years. Thank you. Let me start. Alderman Tendem's acceptance of a $1,000 gift from a developer with an application for zoning relief pending before the city creates the appearance of impropriety and the potential for conflict of interest. To ensure transparency and promote public trust in our elected officials, I am asking that the Evanston Board of Ethics to initiate a review of the case and recommend a change to code of ethics that would prohibit acceptance of money or gifts, in kind or otherwise, by any elected official from persons or entities with applications for zoning relief pending before the city. I furthermore ask that the City Council defer a final vote on the application for a bed-and-breakfast establishment at 1622 Forest and any action on Harley-Clark Mansion until the Board of Ethics has made ruling on the matter. It is my hope that you will consider this. I hope I did not come across as righteously indignant, undemocratic, or elitist. My hope is that I come across as a concerned, active participant who loves his town and who respects the democratic process and wants his elected officials to be free from any appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
You know, just wait one second. You know, this is highly charged, but you know what? Let's try and be decent to people who are attempting to serve up here. I don't, we don't need any more of that. If you want to communicate, go to the Ethics Committee. That's it. No more talk about that. I'm not gonna let any more Tendem bashing go on tonight, okay? You're finished. You're finished. You're finished. All right. Next, we have, are you Ilya? Yes, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Ilya Kite. I'm a resident of Skokie, 8927 Bronx Avenue. I'm not gonna come up with any statistics or appeal to your emotions. I'm not gonna bring up Sandy Hook, because we all know that's not gonna do any justice here. I'm against the ban, and I want you to know that Park Ridge just ruled in support of the ban. They do not support it. They ruled it down. So I hope your board will follow their example and do the same. I think all the ban is gonna do is criminalize law-abiding citizens. I also am interested to know how Evanston will handle removing the weapons if the ban is passed. Is the board gonna direct it? Is the police department gonna go door-to-door infringing on rights and removing weapons out of people's homes? A few questions I had that weren't supported by the proposal. Another thing is there's a threat of a misdemeanor. From what I understand, a city cannot charge an individual with a misdemeanor. It has to be done by the state. I could be incorrect. Just another question I had about that. And once again, I'm not gonna take up any more time. I urge you to reconsider and forego the ban. No one needs it. We're all law-abiding citizens. If we were not, we wouldn't be here petitioning this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greg Allen, I think it's Chris, 1927 Noys, Chris, I think. And then Linda Damachek.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Greg Allen. I live at 1417 Kirk Street and have done so for 15 years. I'd like to point out that Piven, actually, a lot of people don't realize, Piven has a theater in the Noys Center, and nothing has held them back from producing the 200 nights of professional theater for the last 42 years. And yet, they produce 27 nights per year, 55 plays in their last 42 years, and yet they're asking that they are going to create a theater that will house 30,000 people a year. So they're proposing to start a new beginning. They say Evanston builds them this new theater, then they will start producing these plays, and people will come at a rate of 30,000 people. Build it, and they will come. Simple, right? Piven says, without this new theater, people won't show up. But just by comparison, let's look at Writers Theater, seven miles north of us in Glencoe. They produce 236 nights of theater in a room that is in the back of a bookstore. Writers proves you don't need a new state-of-the-art theater in order to do great theater. Instead of producing theater, Piven Workshop has been focusing on teaching kids and adults. That's great. If the city wants to subsidize an expansion of the Piven Workshop into more Noys Studios, that's fine, but don't kick out talented artists to build a theater that is completely unnecessary, and don't cripple the building. Currently, the Noys Center is the only public building in the city of Evanston that turns a profit. The only one. And yet, if this goes through, it will never turn a profit again.
Okay. Thank you. Could you tell me your name? Chuck. It is Chuck.
Can you pass those that way?
Yes.
Could you pass those that way?
All right. Chuck Harper.
I'm Chuck Harper. I live at 296 White Oak in Oneckah, and I'm here to support Maggie. The chart that I've just given you shows the cost of every theater that's been built in the metro Chicago area in the last 20 years. And adjusted for inflation, the cost of a theater seat has been between about $22,000 and $45,000. Piven is estimating that their costs will be significantly lower than any theater actually built in Chicago, and we challenge their assumptions and their numbers. Secondly, every theater that has been built has been built on the principle that in order to sell a theater ticket, you need one theater seat and half of a parking space. You understood this when you approved the music theater on Davis zoning, because you also required the least 59 spaces at Sherman Garage. Please have your city engineer determine how many parking spaces you would need to support 300 theater seats at the Noys Center before you approve any lease to build additional theater seats at Noys.
Thank you. Linda Damachek.
Close. Damachek. Of course. Close enough. Good evening. I'm a South Evanston resident concerned...
Can you give your address, please?
Pardon me?
Your address. Name and address.
1318 Judson. I'm a South Evanston resident concerned about lakefront open space preservation at Lighthouse Lakefront Park. City lakefront parkland should never be sold. Period. Evanston's public ownership of lakefront parkland makes us important stewards for future generations. Daniel Burnham's 1909 plan proposed preserving public ownership of the lakefront all the way from the south side of Chicago, all the way up to Womet. All of Evanston's city planning documents refer to making the highest priority given to acquisition of lakefront areas and saying it's our most precious asset. No public parkland should be lost to a for-profit private entity. In the spirit of Daniel Burnham's big plans, making big plans, I encourage the City Council to create a committee to explore appropriate nonprofit arts and cultural uses for the Harley-Clark Mansion in the future. We have smart and creative residents and city staff who can come up with new use and funding ideas that retain public ownership of our precious asset, the Lighthouse Beach Lakefront Parkland. Please consider creating such a committee.
Thank you. I'm going to the non-agenda topics now, and I have Jack Lermon and Sheila Ottinger on this also. Do you want to speak again? Not sure. Jack? Seems like a no. Sheila? Seems like a no. Okay. Next is Barbara Janes. I'm gonna read these off. Barbara Janes, Mary Rosinski, Vanessa Dillingham, and Jerry Woods. Tick-tock. Let's go. Barbara Janes, Mary Rosinski, Vanessa Dillingham, and Jerry Woods. Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Janes. I live at 802 Colfax Street. And Bob is, my husband Bob, Janes, is here with me, and I'm not going to talk exactly about Harley-Clark, but an incident that happened at the art fair yesterday. Bob and I, Bob was carrying the sign. I had flyers and petitions. You can show them the sign. And for an hour, we circulated, and people came up to us, and they wanted to sign the petition, and they were thrilled that we were there. So about an hour into our experience, I stopped and talked with Dick Peach in the information tent, and he said he was for development of the lakefront. I moved on within five minutes. A woman had, came up to me and to Bob and said, we had to leave. And if we didn't leave, she would have to call the police. And the last thing I wanted to do was create anything negative about our group or our position. So we left, and I said, well, did somebody complain? And she pointed to the information tent, said that board over there. And as we talked, as she escorted us out, she didn't know any names, but it was clear that it was the Chamber of Commerce. We were in the public way. Our freedom of speech was abrogated, and I think this council needs to convey that this was not a private event.
I agree with you completely, but your time is up, really.
All right. But I hope you will do something about that.
Excellent point. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Hi, my name's Mary Rosinski. I live at 1729 Chancellor. I'll try to abbreviate this. I know it's not an agenda item, but we felt that a lot of people were unaware that the city is contemplating selling two and a half acres of parkland, and we thought that the first question that people should be having with our community is whether or not we should be selling our parkland, not what it's worth. Most people move to this area, and one of the things they value is the access to the most valuable property on the North Shore, and we feel that this is an asset that is an economic development issue with the City Council, that you should not get rid of this, that we should find a way that the people in this city can use that and have a venue there that benefits everyone, not for a private investor. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Dillingham, so thank you for hearing me tonight. I live at 1903 Livingston Street, and I know I'm also non-agenda, and I apologize for taking people's time, but I feared that this issue would never be on the agenda, so I wanted to speak up that I'm against the sale and development of any of the lakefront parkland. My family moved to Evanston last spring, and the number one reason we chose this is the beaches, and specifically, Lighthouse Beach. Lighthouse Beach is one of the most special and unique spots in the whole Chicago area, and I'm really proud to have it, you know, in my backyard, so to speak. I know that under the proposal, the beach access would remain, but the plans would completely and irreparably change the character, charm, and beauty of this magical spot that is so dear to our community. When I first heard neighbors discussing the proposed sale, I assumed it was just rumor because it sounded too ludicrous to be true, that the city would sell off something as priceless as a portion of its limited lakefront was to me unfathomable, and even more so, that it could be turned into a hotel and 200-car parking garage. But I still hold out hope that my initial thought is true, that this is something you will not let happen, and discussions regarding this deal will cease, and then it will never be on the agenda. We're a city of bright, bright minds, and surely, we can all work together to come up with a solution that's more reasonable, that doesn't include selling and developing our parkland for private use. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. Jerry, one second. Okay. Next will be Janad Rizki, John, again, from Brummel, and Sabrina Edmund.
Jerry, you're next.
No, yes, you're next. Yeah, I just wanted to give the lineup. No, 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 no.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Bobkowitz, excuse me. Manager Bobkowitz. Freudian slip. I'm Jerry Woods from 847 Judson Avenue, Ward 3. The points that have been made just by the previous speakers, I think I'm gonna largely reiterate. I'd just like to say that as an artist and Evanston artist, I have a fond place in my heart for the Arts Center. The impression I'm getting is that the Evanston Arts Center is somehow irreparable, or it's gonna be a big, big drain on the city's budget to keep up. I don't really think that's the case. I think it's a strong, sturdy building with a lot of years left in it, for some purpose. I personally don't think that the Arts Center has to stay there, but let's not tear down the Harley-Clark Mansion. I think there's a couple of reasons why this proposal for even selling a mansion and putting on an addition for a boutique B&amp;B is really wacko. It's outrageous. I mean, who's thinking about the aesthetics of this? Who's thinking about the nature of a public park, which is held in trust essentially for all of the citizens? And this is going to be given over to the private profit of an individual and his investors? It makes no sense to me. And we have enough dysfunction in our federal government without increasing the perception of dysfunction here in our local government.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Janad, and then John, you're next, and Sabrina is next after John.
Janad Rizki. This council has launched a discussing process to sell our parks. First, this council refused to create an ordinance to ban the sale of parkland. Then this council sold, or leased, a 50-year lease as a sale, a half an acre of parkland to Northwestern University, cutting down all the trees to build a fire lane. A wonderful use of our parks, isn't it? Now this council, in illegal meetings, wants to sell two and a half acres of Lighthouse Beach Park for a 57-unit hotel and a parking garage. Let's just remember, in Illinois, Senate seats are not for sale, nor should our parklands be for sale in Evanston. Thank you.
I've lived in Evanston for...
Your name and address.
Sabrina Edmund, 25 temporary. I've lived in Evanston for 20 years. I love this city. I'm currently raising my two boys in a condo. We do not have a yard. Lighthouse Beach is our yard. This is a very special place with a unique topography, dunes, beach, forest, playground. My son loves catching lightning bugs there, climbing the rocks. I don't know if any of you have read the book, Last Child in the Woods, but these places are disappearing, and I think it is incumbent on us to save these places for not only our own children, but for future generations. I would remind you that the landscape architect who designed the grounds, Jens Jensen, was a fierce conservationist who believed in public lands for the people. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Crucial. I live at 716 Brummel. Also, my in-laws live up on Lakeside Clark there, and I think the whole thing with selling the lakefront, that's a no-go. I mean, it's public land. It should be for the people, not for private developers. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
We have Michael, starts with an L, last name, from Milburn Place, Teddy Keenan, Claire Kelly Delgado, Nick Agnew, Jeremy Ryan, and Linda Damachek. Now, several of you have already spoken. Do you want to speak again?
Do you want to?
No. You can speak as long as you want.
All right. Thank you. Michael Lor, I live at 726 Milburn. I don't want to repeat what a lot of the speakers have said about the Harley-Clark Mansion, but I support everything they've said in terms of opposing the sale of that property to a private developer, much less the Pritzkers, who could afford any property they want anywhere along the lakefront. Why do we have to sell them 2.5 acres of Evanston Lakefront? I'm sure the council knows, once the lakefront is sold, you'll never get it back again. The lakefront belongs to the citizens and taxpayers of Evanston. All the council has to do... I just got my second installment the other day, and I noticed a fairly hefty install, a segment of my taxes for the Evanston Park Lighthouse District. Will you be willing to, if the, if we sell this property, to rebate that portion of that tax bill to me? I doubt that very much. But all of you, look at your tax bill and look at what you're paying for the Lighthouse Park District on your tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Teddy Keenan.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Teddy Keenan. I live at 2214 Colfax Street. I actually work at the beach. I'm a lifeguard, uh, so I'm an employee of the city. I've been going to the beach since I was about three years old. Uh, my brother and sister both love the beaches as much as I do. Um, I basically am advocating for all the kids, the future generations that could use this beach and will use this beach. It's a 57-room mansion that they're trying to build, and I, I just feel that if it's there, if the garage is there, it's not gonna be the same atmosphere. And I urge you to make the decision as if you're staring at this room full of a bunch of 10-year-old kids playing at the beach. Thank you.
Jeremy Ryan. Uh, here comes Jeremy.
Hi.
What does it, what does your shirt say?
Lighthouse Beach. As does hers and my wife's.
Ah, that's so cute.
Thanks. Um, my name's Jeremy Ryan. I'm here with my family, as you can see. I live at 2426 Noise Street in Evanston. And, um, I've, I've heard all of the many reasons that people are giving for why Lighthouse Beach should not be converted as, as proposed. Um, I'd like to present the perspective of my children, um, who, we moved up to Evanston about two years ago, um, and there were two big reasons. The first being the schools, and the second being Lighthouse Beach, that we came to multiple times every single week and have since come multiple times every single week. Uh, this is a natural resource for us and is a feature of Evanston. Um, I'd like to read, um, uh, in addition to the 153 signatures that Mr. Green had cited, um, I'd like to, uh, also read from a letter that I submitted along with that. Uh, while we, of course, uh, recognize that, um, the changing of the building would irrevocably uh, damage, uh, how we, how we are currently using the, the beach itself, we'd also like to express that regardless of outcome for the building itself, and before any decision is made about its use, we seek for the city of Evanston and its residents to maintain full ownership of the land, parking lot, uh, the park, the beach, full beach access, as is the case today, for the citizens in perpetuity. We think that there are many other models that we can easily look to. For example, in Florida, where they've given hotel lease usage, uh, but still maintain public beach, beach access. Um, and the public can actually get to the beach because the hotels are there.
Time's up.
So there are lots of ways that we could look. Um, in short, while, I'm sorry, I don't know all of your titles. I'd like you to be, uh, the title I'd like to give you is "Hero to My Children. Please Save Lighthouse Beach."
Time's up. Thank you. I'm assuming Linda Damachuk is not speaking again, correct? Because I haven't seen her. Okay, so, all right. Citizen comment is over. Everybody has spoken who signed up. I appreciate all your comments, at least most of them. Moving right along.
Melissa's gonna do the consent calendar?
Yes, yes, I'm gonna introduce. Um, Melissa Nguyen, Alderman of the Third Ward, is going to do the consent agenda? Or wait, should we do the special order first? Okay, well, Melissa, would you like to introduce the special order, please?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. SP1, Ordinance 76 dash zero, O, dash 13, An Ordinance to Ban Assault Weapons in the City of Evanston. I move approval.
Second.
Second. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Um, I think many of us have a general impression of what, uh, what we view an assault weapon uh, to consist of. Terms like weapon of war, mass destruction, things of that nature, uh, at least for me, come to mind. What we are looking at as far as the proposal on the table right now, not only contains a ban, but it also contains a definition. It provides us with a definition of what constitutes an assault weapon. Um, I've spent a great deal of time looking at the pending proposal, and what we've got is really, uh, and I think somebody, one of the speakers mentioned it, what we have are primarily a list of cosmetic features that might make a gun look scary. What we don't have is identification of the functional aspects of the weapon that makes it dangerous. For example, there's nothing in the ban that prohibits the high-capacity weapons. So if we were to pass this ordinance, you could still have a gun that could hold as many bullets as somebody wants it to hold. And I don't think that that's what we're intending to do. Uh, in addition, the definition as we have it, my impression is, is that it would also ban an ordinary hunting rifle. So what we'd be doing is banning the most popular, uh, common hunting rifles and not banning high-capacity, rapid-firing, uh, weapons. And that's not what we want to do. Uh, so unfortunately, my inclination is to, uh, ask our legal staff to, um, continue to work with this, to ensure that the proposal, uh, does what I, I think that my constituents expected. It's to ban the highly dangerous weapons, uh, high-capacity magazines, bullet piercing, armor-piercing bullets, things of that nature. Um, and to not ban an ordinary hunting rifle. Um, so I think we should hold this until, uh, until we get an ordinance that does what people are looking for, because this doesn't do that, unfortunately. I, I, I think that we do need to do something, uh, to address this, uh, this threat, but what we have on the table doesn't accomplish the goal.
Alderman Wilson, do you, do you have anything to comment on regarding the exception that several, uh, people have written to us, have asked us to include?
Well, there's, uh...
Describe that.
I don't have it in front, you're talking about the, like, the vintage antique?
Right. No, no, no. The, um, the Federal FOIA people, for example, the individual tonight who was...
Right, right, who was, uh, yeah. And I understand people are upset. That should be looked at. Um, I don't, I, again, I don't have it in front of me. I just have what we have, uh, as far as our proposal is concerned. Um, I can't, I can't suggest changes on the fly. It's, it's too complex, it's too important, and it's important to get it right. It's important to get it right to, again, make sure that we address the expectations of the community. You don't want people to have high-capacity, rapid-firing weapons and not be able to have an ordinary hunting rifle. Um, I think it's important to address, I think antique firearms are in here. But, uh, there are other ordinances that have been recently passed by other communities in the area. Um, there's a good bit of, uh, information available, um, since the Seventh Circuit and the Supreme Court decisions have been issued. So I think that we can come up with something that is, uh, and, you know, again, people threaten the lawsuits. Yeah, I'm a lawyer, I'm not afraid of lawsuits, but, uh, I would like to have a product that is not, uh, you know, something that will be thrown out. I want a quality product that's gonna serve our constituents and protect people from dangerous weapons.
We have a time problem, though. Alderman Nguyen?
Well, that was, one of my questions was, uh, what is the time limit that we have at this point from, um, under the state, uh, state statute? But I agree with Alderman Wilson's concerns. Uh, for instance, just the example that was given this evening by one of the speakers about, um, uh, simply adding the rifle stock, um, would then my, make, change the, the type, the gun, but it would still be the same, uh, it would take it out from under this. So I do want to make sure that, as, as Alderman Wilson says, that we achieve the goal that we all want, uh, that we're seeking. But my other question is, how much time do we have to do it?
Mr. Farrar, could you, um, address the issue of the governor and the governor's veto and the override, et cetera, et cetera? And our time problem?
Madam Mayor Protem, members of the council, Manager Bob Kowitz, Grant Farrar Corporation Council. With respect to the timeframe issue, um, as you know, the General Assembly is scheduled to convene tomorrow to consider whether or not to do an override of Governor Quinn's ammendatory veto. The way that we've written the ordinance right now is that the ordinance on the floor tonight before you're all, uh, you all, it would take effect upon approval and passage of HB 183. Whenever that takes, uh, effect and however that takes effect, whether it comes into play by the legislature not overriding the veto, or the legislature overriding the veto over the governor's, uh, veto. So, um, that would take effect, uh, immediately, concurrently with approval of HB 183. The other thing that, to keep in mind is, there is a deadline, uh, pursuant to the Seventh Circuit Federal Court decision, um, relative to Illinois instituting the larger concealed carry legislation of which this assault weapons ban is a subset of. So, uh, essentially, HB 183 preempts home rule. It says that home rule communities have the opportunity to adopt an ordinance within 10 days of HB 183 become effective. So we have the clock ticking 10 days, essentially.
Would you just address the issue of amending whatever we pass?
HB 183 specifically provides that as long as a home rule community adopts an ordinance within the 10-day timeframe, that the ordinance can be amended later. There is no, there is no back-end limitation on, on an amendment.
I think that's important. All right, thank you. Alderman Nguyen, are you finished?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Alderman Holmes, you're next.
Um, stay there for a minute. Um, Mr. Farrar, uh, I thought that, um, when you, we did the ordinance, it was based on, um, maybe what they have in Chicago. What I really want to know is, then, uh, how does it compare with what Skokie passed last week?
Yes, you're correct, Alderman Holmes. The way that we drafted the ordinance, um, it was substantially tailored after the Chicago, as well as the Cook County ordinance, which, uh, spoke to cosmetic features. Um, an important point that HB 183 also emphasized was that along with the home rule ability to adopt an ordinance within this 10-day timeframe, that home rule communities could, uh, regulate assault weapons based upon cosmetic features. So again, the larger context is, we were given essentially four weeks after the legislature acted. We took a best-practice model, Chicago, Cook County. It's, certainly, the Cook County ordinance is being litigated right now, but we, we took something there and, and, and worked it into the proposed Evanston ordinance. With respect to the Skokie approach, it was, uh, substantively different than ours. Um, it took a new approach in terms of, uh, categorizing assault weapons into two different categories. To be honest, they passed that last week. I'm still trying to get ahold of Mr. Lorj over in Skokie to, to get into, uh, a conversation with him about the methodology and the, and the germination of, of the approach in Skokie. So it is different than the, than the proposed ordinance on the floor tonight. How Skokie got to that and, and the differences in their language, I honestly do not have the context. I, I don't know yet.
However, if I'm understanding correctly, if we pass this tonight, we can amend it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Fess, do you still want to speak?
I, I just had a really quick question regarding Mr. Zoot's, um, email that he sent to us today. Um, in it, he referred to the fact that he had met with you and the police chief?
That is correct.
Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Zoot made a, made a formal request, um, to meet with me to, uh, discuss his concerns relative to the ATF, uh, processing, licensing process and, um, staff always, when, when a concerned citizen has a question about legislation, we try to accommodate the request. So I did meet with Mr. Zoot, made it very clear to him that, uh, I was not there to speak to policy, but I was to, uh, find out what his concerns were and, and what his specific issue was. And he did relay to me that, um, as a curio collector, as a, as a licensee under an ATF regulatory scheme under the Code of Federal Regulations and the Gun Control Act of 1968, that it was his position that, uh, he would like to have an exemption, uh, from the coverage of the assault weapons ban to allow him to keep assault weapons. He also relayed to me that he target shoots with an AR-15, and, and, so that was his concern. And I took the meeting and, and, and we discussed it, and he indicated that, uh, he would like to have a floor amendment. And I said, "Well, typically what happens is if a citizen wants to amend legislation, they contact a member of council and they request a floor amendment. Be prepared."
Okay.
But, but, but as you said, we can amend this at a future date.
That is correct.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Alderman Wilson, the, uh, the amendments that you're seeking to add to the existing proposed ordinance would address and limit high-capacity weapons, high-capacity magazines, and armor-piercing ammunition? Were there other things you wanted to add, or, or, you're really looking to flesh it out more fully in a way that...
I think it should be fleshed out. I think, uh, I've also looked at the Skokie ordinance and some of the other communities, which have a different, a bit of a different approach. And I think, I would assume that our, our council could look at those and see how other people are handling those things. But those are just examples of what I, what I view to be very glaring deficiencies in what we've got. So, you know, I, we, we have a meeting in a week, which is less than 10 days, and I would rather, um, I would rather try to, again, put through a quality product on the first try, or at least as close as we can get, rather than just, uh, something that people obviously are, uh, you know, number one, people who've spoken in favor of this, of the ordinance are gonna be gravely disappointed once they figure out that it doesn't cover, again, high-capacity weapons and, and things of that nature, um, as well as the people who, who might have an ordinary hunting rifle, who are also gonna be gravely disappointed if we just, uh, you know, pass it for the sake of passing something.
So, um, you'd rather not pass an ordinance that disappoints everybody, but rather than come back in a week and, and see if we can refine this and...
We should always strive to put forth a quality product.
And then tinker with it.
The best quality product we can put out.
And tinker with it, with amendments, perhaps, down the road if necessary, rather than doing a wholesale amendment to it?
I think it needs work before we pass it, right? I'm, I'm moving that we hold it until the next meeting, which is a week from tonight.
Second. Uh, the item has been held. It, what is our next meeting day?
July 15.
July 15. Uh, this will be on our agenda, uh, for July 15. All right, moving right along. Alderman Nguyen?
I was wondering about that. Okay. Uh, thank you.
Not at this point.
Not at Administration of Public Works.
Okay. Uh, the consent agenda. M1, Approval of Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of June 10th, 2013. M2, Approval of Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting, June 17th, 2013. M3, Approval of Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting, June 24th, 2013. Administration and Public Works. A1, City of Evanston Payroll Through 6/16/13. A2, Evanston, City of Evanston Bills. Credit Card Activity Period Ending May 31, 2013. Those are for action tonight. A 3.1, Approval of a Contract with Kenny Construction Company for Large-Diameter Sewer Rehab, Bid 13-42. The staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to award a contract in the amount of $1,388,290 to Kenny Construction Company for the large-diameter sewer rehab, Central Park Avenue and Main Street, contingent upon receiving the appropriate loan funding from the IEPA. It is anticipated that the IEPA will provide loan funding from the State Revolving Fund in the amount of $1,429,940. A 3.2, Approval of Contract with SAC Construction for 2013 Cured-in-Place Pipelining Contract, B, Bid 13-43. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the 2013 cured-in-place pipelining contract with SAC Construction in the amount of $179,887.70. A 3.3, Approval of Single-Source Purchase of Rate of, Rate of Flow Transmitters...
Excuse me, Alderman. Gentlemen, gentlemen... Gentlemen, gentlemen, could you step outside and talk all you want, please? Shh, shh, shh. Okay. Go ahead. They were pretty quiet, but-
Yeah, thank you. A 3.3, approval of single-source purchase of rate, rate of flow transmitters and manifolds from Rosemont, Inc. for the water treatment plant. Staff recommends approval of a single-source purchase of rate of flow transmitter equipment from Rosemont, Inc. in the amount of $57,386.7. A 3.4, approval of agreement with Connolly's Academy for martial arts instruction. Staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to execute a single-source agreement with Connolly's Academy through December 2014 for martial arts program services at the Levy Senior Center, which is projected to reach a dollar value of over $20,000 in payments to the vendor. Revenue for the program registrations are deposited in the general fund. That's also for action tonight. A 3.5, approval of contract with A-Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc. for the 2013 CIP-3 street resurfacing project. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the 2013 CIP-3 street resurfacing project to A-Lamp Concrete Contractors in the amount of $968,396. A 3.6, approval of a contract with Chicagoland Paving for Davis Street Improvement Project. Staff recommends we authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the Davis Street Improvement Project with Chicagoland Paving in the amount of $2,299,905.65. Funding is provided by the Washington National Tiff Fund in the amount of $879,853.87. The sewer fund for $250,000, and the capital improvement fund for 1.17 million, approximately. A4, approval of Bridge Street Bridge Project construction funding increase. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to increase a local share of the construction cost by $86,020% for the Bridge Street, Bridge Reconstruction Project. The additional, the additional construction cost for the bridge project is funded from the remaining funds in the street resurfacing program and the capital improvements fund. A5, City of Evanston's fiscal year 2012 audited financial, audited annual financial report. Staff recommends we accept this report. We all have one with, at our places here. A6, Resolution 41-R-13 Northwestern University Utility Easement on Emerson Street. Staff recommends that the city council adopt this resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a chilled water service utility easement with Northwestern in order to cross Emerson Street. The easement will be for a 50-year period for a $220 annual, $220 annual fee. A7, Ordinance 77-O-13 authorizing sale of surplus vehicles and equipment. Staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to publicly offer the sale of various vehicles and equipment owned by the city through public auction based on Ordinance 77-O-13. The vehicles are presently out of service. A8, Ordinance 84-O-13 authorizing 2013 general obligation bond issue. Staff recommends approval of a draft ordinance for the fiscal year 2013 bond issuance in the not-to-exceed amount totaling $12,700,000. The ordinance will be completed and signed after the bond sale date, which is tentatively scheduled for July 31, 2013. A9, Ordinance 58-O-13 decreasing the number of active Class D liquor licenses, Wingstop. Staff recommends the city council adopt this ordinance, which amends the city code as, to decrease the number of authorized Class D liquor licenses to 21, because Wingstop stopped selling alcohol in January 2013 and no longer intends to renew its liquor license. A10, Ordinance 64-O-13 decreasing the number of active Class D liquor licenses, Siam Splendor. Staff recommends the city council adopt this ordinance, which amends the code, our liquor code, to decrease the number of authorized Class D liquor licenses to 20, because Vichita Corporation, doing business as Siam Splendor, is not renewing its Class D liquor license. A11, Ordinance 65-O-13 increasing the number of Class P-1 liquor licenses, Temperance Beer Company. Staff recommends the city council adopt this ordinance, which amends our liquor code, to increase the number of authorized Class P1 liquor licenses to 1, to permit liquor license issuance to Temperance Beer Company, doing business as Temperance Beer Company. This is, this item is for action. Ordinance A12, Ordinance 68-O-13 amending Class P1 liquor license capacity. Staff recommends city council adopt this ordinance, which amend Class P1 by increasing the maximum quantity of craft beer permitted for onsite production and storage from 465,000 gallons to 930,000 gallons annually. This amendment mirrors measures recently adopted by the state legislature in HB 1573. A13, Ordinance 66-O-13 authorizing Class N liquor licenses to off, offer tastings. The staff recommends the city council adopt this ordinance, which, which amends our liquor code, to authorize Class N liquor licensees to offer tastings of alcoholic liquor. Class N liquor licenses are held by grocery stores, including Jewel, Osco, Dominix, Food for Less, Whole Foods, and Sam's Club. Item A14, Ordinance 67-O-13 authorizing Class T liquor licensees to offer samples. Staff recommends the city council adopt this ordinance, which amends our liquor code, to authorize Class T liquor licensees to offer samples of beer brewed by the licensee. Class T is the city's brew pub liquor license, and Smiley Brothers Restaurant and Brewery is the city's only Class T licensee. A15, Ordinance 56-O-13 text amendment to city code subsection 11-2-11- subsection B to correct code reference. The staff recommends city council adopt this ordinance, which amends the text of Evanston City Code 2012 subsection 11-2-11- subsection B, to correct the code reference regarding mailing notices of impending vehicle immobilization. A16, Ordinance 74-O-13 amending the city code to establish a three-way stop at Dewey and Washington Street. The Alderman of the Ninth Ward recommends the adoption of a proposed ordinance by which the city council would amend section 10-11-5 subsection C, Schedule V, subsection C of the city code, to establish a three-way stop at Dewey Avenue and Washington Street. Funding is provided by the Traffic Control Supplies Account. Planning and Development. P1, Resolution 39-R-13 designating the portion of Poplar Avenue between Central Street and Harrison Street with the honorary street name signed Mary Lou Smith Way. The Citizens Advisory Committee on Public Place Names recommends approval for resolution. Excellent choice. P2, approval of a sidewalk cafe for Farmhouse Evanston. Staff recommends consideration of a first-time application for a sidewalk cafe permit for Farmhouse Evanston, a type 1 restaurant located at 703 Church Street, opening Wednesday. P3, approval of a sidewalk cafe for La Maquina Cafe. Staff recommends consideration of a first-time application for a sidewalk cafe for La Maquina Cafe, a type 1 restaurant located at 1620 Orington Avenue. P4, approval of an application for home funds for a tenant-based-
Can you tell?
Yes. P4 has been held in committee until the next Planning and Development Committee meeting on July 22. P5, Ordinance 71-O-13 granting a special use for wholesale goods establishment at 2310 Main Street. The ZBA, the Site Plan and Appearance Review Committee, and the staff recommend the adoption of this ordinance granting a special use permit for the establishment of a wholesale goods establishment by Few Spirits LLC at 2310 Main Street. P6, Ordinance 70-O-13 granting a special use for a type 2 restaurant at 1907 Central Street. The ZBA, the Site Plan and Appearance Review Committee, and staff recommend the adoption of this ordinance granting a special use permit for a type 2 restaurant, Leonida's Chocolate Cafe at 1907 Central Street. P7, Ordinance 72-O-13 amending the special use permit for a type 2 restaurant at 519 Main Street, that's Starbucks. Staff recommends the adoption of this ordinance that deletes the condition of an adopted special use from 1992, section 3-C of Ordinance 121-O-01, requiring that a Starbucks at 519 Main Street hire an off-duty police officers to issue parking citations to customers who illegally park in the vicinity of Starbucks. I believe there's an error in this. I believe it's from 2002, not 1992. I think that the staff should check on that. Okay? All right, so this is an adopted special use that was adopted in 2002. P8, Ordinance 73-O-13 granting a special use for a yard waste transfer facility at 2533 and 2532 Oakton Street. The ZBA and city staff recommend the adoption of an Ordinance 73-O-13 granting a special use permit for the operation of a yard waste transfer facility at this site. P9, Ordinance 60-O-13 granting a special use for a B&amp;B establishment at 1622 Forest Avenue. This is off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Human Services. H1, approval of Township of Evanston June 2013 bills. Township of Evanston supervisor recommends the city council approve the Township of Evanston bills, payroll, and medical payments for the month of June 2013 in the amount of $137,826.4. H2, Ordinance 43-O-13 lease and construction agreement for city-owned property at 927 Neust-
Off, please.
That is also off, and will be addressed by the-
The next one is off.
And the next one is off as well, both regarding the Neustreet Cultural Center. Economic Development. O1, approval of Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau 2013 request for funding. The Economic Development Committee and staff support a recommendation to the city council for approval of $65,564 in funding for a 12-month period commencing July 1, 2013, to Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. Funding is provided by the Economic Development Fund, funds Economic Development Partnership account. O2, approval of the Chicago Dempster Merchants Association's application for the Evanston Great Merchants Grant Program. The staff and the Economic Development Committee recommend the city council approve a Great Merchants Grant in the amount of $7,500 to the Chicago Dempster Merchants Association for fiscal year 2013. O3, approval of the Howard Street Business Association's application for the Evanston Great Merchants Grant Program. Staff and Economic Development Committee recommend the city council approve this grant in the amount of $9,000 to the Howard Street Business Association for fiscal year 2013. Under appointments tonight, we have to the Chicago Main Tiff Advisory Committee, Sean Chinskey, also to that same committee, Andrea Ford. With that, Mayor Pro Tem, I move approval for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Wen. The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
No, I get to vote. I get to vote. I serve as an alderman, just doing the mayor a favor here. But I get to vote. I have all the rights of an alderman. Thank goodness.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero is the vote. The consent agenda passes. As chairman of the Administration Public Works Committee, I would like to note that Alderman Burrus abstained for the easement issue with the Coldwater utility under the roadway. And also, coming back to us at our next meeting is the sale of surplus vehicles with an amendment that will exclude the sale of the police camper until other, you know, the big camper? We've replaced it with the Brink's vehicle. So, the camper is going to be, was going to be auctioned up, but we're going to hold that, single unit, for a possibility of a local purchase. Is there a report from Planning and Development?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. We have item P9, Ordinance 60-O-13 granting a special use for bed-and-breakfast establishment at 1622 Forest Avenue.
Could you, could we just get rid of P4 first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Oh, P4, approval of an application for home funds for a tenant-based rental assistance program by Connections for the Homeless. This was held in committee for both staff and representatives for Connections for the Homeless to provide the committee with some additional information based on outcomes and to improve some of the information gathering mechanisms that they will be having in the future.
Thank you.
Now, back to P8, P9, excuse me.
P9. Excuse me, Alderman Wen. Alderman Burrus, your light was on.
It's for P9.
Okay.
I put it on before.
Okay. All right. Now, we're to P9, Ordinance 60-O-13 granting a special use for a B&amp;B at 1622 Forest Avenue.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Okay. Alderman Burrus.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am requesting a amendment to the ordinance to strike section 3B, which requires commercial trash collection at 1622 Forest for at least three times per week. This requirement would cause unnecessary disturbance to the neighbors, particularly since the homes that use the alley almost all have coach houses, which are rented out. And the coach houses, obviously, are situated right on the alley. As you know, a B&amp;B operates in a manner similar to that of a family living in a home, and the current system of trash pickup by the city using the same number of trash bins used by the former owner will cause the least amount of disturbance in the neighborhood. So, I'm asking for your consideration of striking 3B. Thank you.
I'd second that.
Alderman Fisk, speaking to the amendment.
Yeah, the, the use is not consistent with a single-family home. It is a commercial, a commercial bed-and-breakfast, operating very much like a small hotel. And I would rather start out with the, the recommendation from the ZBA, which was to have commercial garbage pickup and, as stated in the ordinance, and see how that works if it turns out. It is not necessary. We can always come back and amend.
I would have a different recommendation, and that would be that we would give them three months to show that they could perform as they normally would, and then if that doesn't work out, come back and we'll add an additional day. But I, I would think that those trucks going back and forth, first of all, it's noisy and stinky, and if the garbage doesn't require it, why, why force them to do it? I mean, I, I think if they have, if they have the problem, but in the beginning, they're probably not going to be full anyway, so. But I, I think we should wait for three months. But I, I think that should be written in the ordinance, that we would do a check in three months.
Okay, that's fine, if you want to check in three months.
Accept your amendment.
Pardon me? Would you accept that?
I accept your amendment.
Okay. All right. So, any other comments about this item? Here, seeing no lights, all those in favor of supporting the amendment regarding, regarding garbage not being required, but in three months, if the need arises, adding additional pickups?
Aye.
Sort of clumsily put, okay? All right. It's unanimous, right? Any opposed to that? No? Okay, so that's unanimous. All right, we're going to the main motion now. There's a motion on the floor to approve 60-O-13 granting a special use for bed-and-breakfast establishment at 1622 Forest Avenue. Let's, let's do a roll call.
No, we have lights.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, Alderman Wen, and then Alderman Fisk.
I believe Alderman Fisk had her light on first.
Oh, Alderman Fisk, you're first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. This, I want to tell you, first of all, a few points to consider here. The same developer now owns four houses on this block in the first ward. And a fifth house was just purchased in the third ward on the lakefront. And as we know, the same applicant is the lone respondent to the city's RFP for the Harley Clark property. And two years ago, when 300 Church Street was before the council and you approved it, the applicant testified that they had no plans to open another B&amp;B, but here we are again with this one. And when I asked the attorney for the applicant at the last meeting whether he would make a promise that this would be the last B&amp;B, he said he would not. And I can only assume that we would be looking at a third or a fourth or a fifth B&amp;B down the road. The ZBA denied the application. I believe our yellow agenda is incorrect when they say that it met the standards of a special use in this district. It did not. The ZBA found that it did not meet two of the standards. As Member Gingold said, this is not the type of ownership that's contemplated in our zoning ordinance. It's a commercial business that is inconsistent with a residential neighborhood, and it will have the effect of opening the door to other commercial uses to creep into single-family residential neighborhoods and which will ultimately undermine our zoning ordinance. Related to Bs and Bs are the same concerns from the same types of neighbors that we've heard from all over the city regarding vacation rentals, off-campus student housing, and now we're dealing with them again on Bs and Bs. It's the absence of permanent neighbors, the loss of a feeling of the shared community, noise, parking, and special events. And to say that these don't cause a negative cumulative effect in a neighborhood, two Bs and Bs, one door apart on a block that has only contained six houses, is just wrong. And the ZBA determined that the addition of this particular B&amp;B on this particular block would cause a negative cumulative effect. In other words, the ZBA found out what the neighbors already know is true and what you've heard here at council on these other issues with vacation rentals and student housing in the past. And that is that this use is inconsistent with our zoning ordinance. It's going to undermine our zoning ordinance, and it certainly is inconsistent with a residential neighborhood. Now, there's no doubt that Mr. Pritzker is going to do a good job in fixing up their house, but to suggest that these houses in this neighborhood or in any other neighborhood in the city would not attract people to move into them and fix them up is wrong. People buy our houses in Evanston all the time, regardless of size, regardless of tax bills. They fix them up, they move into them, and then they pass them on when they sell to another generation of people who come in, fix them up, and pass them on. We'll be over-improving these houses. They will never be accessible to the average single-family home buyer. In the future, they will be commercial uses as far down the road as we can see. I just don't think this is the way that we want to treat our residential neighborhoods in Evanston. It's time for us to say no to this use. It's time for us to go back and look at the same conditions that we were talking about previously, which is putting some requirements in in terms of separation from these types of commercial uses in residential neighborhoods and to listen to what our neighbors are saying. And that is that they want to protect the quality of their neighborhoods. They want to continue to live in Evanston. They want to continue to feel welcome here. And they do not want to live next door to a commercial use.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Nguyen is next, and then Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I believe Alderman Fisk said a number of things that I completely agree with. I am not supporting this B&amp;B. I did not support the prior one. I agree that we are turning this block, which is a wonderful residential family block, into a commercial block. It is, this B&amp;B is much too close to the other B&amp;B, and it will not be occupied by the primary owner. It defies all of the most common understanding of what a B&amp;B is or how they should be scattered through a neighborhood. And so for all of these reasons, I will never support a B&amp;B on a block where there is one already existing. I will never support a B&amp;B that will not be occupied by an owner who owns more than 50%, who does not own more than 50%. And I think that it's really important that we let our homeowners know that their residential blocks that they buy on will remain family-centered residential neighborhoods. Over and over again, I am asked by neighbors, how many children live on the block when a house comes up for sale? How many children go to the local school? Will there be kids for my children to play with? That's what we want in a neighborhood. Now, on this block, 30% of those potential homes won't have children in them. And just today, I heard a long discussion about the real estate market here in the Chicago area. Homes overvalued at over $1 million are selling faster than they have in five years. There are, there is a demand for these types of homes. And we need to let the market speak to it. These homes are not unsellable. In both of these instances, the market wasn't permitted to act. So I am not in support of this, although I do know that Colonel Pritzker will do a superb job of restoring these properties. Many other people have done superb jobs of restoring properties throughout Evanston, and they have created family homes. So I am not in favor of this.
The older I get, the more I know that hindsight is always 20/20. And I say that because when we were discussing 300 Davis, we talked about having some distance. And had we done that and been able to compromise, we would not have this problem tonight in terms of having these homes. And I certainly hope that we can come back to that and try and make sure that we can ensure that by having some distance between bread-and-breakfasts, B&amp;Bs, or boutique hotels, whatever it is that we're going to do. And I think that we can avoid and save ourselves some headaches and help our residents more by putting in and compromising with each other when it comes to issues like that. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to support it because I tried very, very hard to do that when we were discussing it before in terms of really having it nailed down to have some distance. And we, as I said, we wouldn't be in this position now. So I am going to support it because I do support B&amp;Bs, and I'm just going to support that tonight.
I don't want to miss anybody who wants to speak, but there are no more lights on. So I'm going to ask the city clerk to call the roll on the matter of Ordinance 60-0-13 granting a special use for a bed-and-breakfast establishment at 1622 Forest Avenue, as amended tonight.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two. The ordinance passes. Chair of the Human Services Committee? Next, what? Do you have something?
The H2 ordinance.
Oh.
I think.
You're chair now. I chaired it.
You do rules, I do human services.
We have so much to do, we can't remember who's doing what.
Ordinance 43-0-13 lease and construction agreement for the city-owned property at 927 Noi Street with Piven Theater. I move approval.
All right, this was taken off the consent agenda. We have Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam.
We're doing this a little different because of the issue.
Yes, I am actually going to ask for council and other members of the community to consider a different proposal for Noi Street Arts Cultural Arts Center. And I believe that this is one that can accommodate not just the tenants of Noi Street, Piven, and it can also make room for other theater groups very strongly associated with Evanston, like Next Theater. What I'd like to propose is that we really, if we're going to make a commitment to the arts, we really need to do it. In my opinion, focusing, trying to have both the Performing Arts Center and a Visual Arts Center in a space that really is struggling to accommodate both at this point is really a mistake. If we're really looking to the future, I think we need to really be forward-thinking and that a theater or performing arts building should be established downtown. In that situation, the theater performances and other traffic that it produces will greatly support the economic goals of our downtown businesses and really reap the benefits that will certainly contribute to our tax base and also be more accessible to folks with plenty of parking and other amenities downtown. I think it creates the perfect venue. As far as the performing, the visual arts, I think, you know, Noi is a fine facility. It does not need a whole lot of renovation for that purpose. I think the city should continue in its capital program to make sure that it is a safe, clean environment for residents, for resident artists. And I think that's certainly an issue about money, but I think that's one we can take on. We have addressed the chimneys, the roof, Wi-Fi, and I think we need to continue in that vein to look at the asbestos abatement and a few other things that it suffers from at this point. You know, I think the, I think this proposal creates the most impact for the community. Like I said before, I think it's forward-thinking. And I see this as a collaboration, referring again to the Performing or Theater Arts Center. I see it as a collaboration between the city, between the obvious theater groups. I think it should be inclusive of the visual arts people that are, you know, around the city in Noi that supports the arts in general. I think we have, you know, we have downtown Evanston. We have a very thriving chamber. We have a lot of organization that can be a part of this proposal in terms of fundraising, looking for grants, and whatever it takes to make this not a burden on the taxpayer but make it a community effort through both private government and other donations. So I would like council to consider that. In my effort to push this, I would like to be responsible or take the lead in the next two weeks of bringing all the parties together that I possibly can and presenting in two weeks at our regular council meeting on the 22nd, the extent to which the community will support this. I think this is important to Piven. I think that at that point, whether this is introduced tonight or whatever, folks at Piven need an answer, and they need it in two weeks, no less. So I think at that point, we can definitely have a different direction if we choose, or we can still up or down, you know, vote up or down on the Piven proposal.
Alderman, I need to ask you a question. Are you suggesting an alternative? Are you suggesting this be introduced? Are you suggesting it be held? What do you suggest? I need to know what your action is.
Procedurally, I think it should be introduced. I think, from what I can tell, Piven really wants to have an answer soon. I think we have certainly brought them along, and they've been very participatory, they've been very patient. But I think that they have some other things of interest. It might certainly be my best effort to keep them in the community, and hopefully, they will, you know, agree that this is a very good direction, a future direction, and a very forward-thinking direction.
So the introduction of this is a placeholder, more or less?
Yes, yes.
Because it's not what you're talking about.
Yes, it's not what I'm talking about. It's a placeholder, and obviously, whatever happens, we need to negotiate a lease with Piven for the remainder of this year, as they're still tenants.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. We've all gotten a lot of correspondence. We've had meetings, we've had conversations. One thing, I guess, that surprises me is few, if anyone, has actually said to me, why did you do this to us? Because it's the city who has put Piven and the other groups into this position. And the particularly unfortunate aspect of this is that it's created what I perceive to be somewhat of an adversarial relationship and circumstance that didn't exist and shouldn't have had to exist. It's not, it's wrong, it's not fair to Piven, it's not fair to the other groups. So for that, I apologize. The city has a responsibility, I mentioned before with regard to the ordinance, to put forth the best product that we can. But we have a responsibility to maintain our facilities. And this is now manifesting itself in a lot of ways, costly ways. But we need to figure out ways on our own without putting a burden on other groups. We shouldn't have come to Piven and, we asked them to do this. They didn't come up with this. The city asked them to come up with an idea. So I don't know if everybody realizes that, but it's clear from a number of the pieces or a number of the comments I've received that people don't understand that we asked them to do this. This isn't something, a situation where they're trying to get something from us. So, Mark, I'm encouraged by the concept. I agree. I know that Piven wants to get some answers and some resolution so they can either move forward or make some decisions. But I want us to be aggressive in the next couple of weeks in considering undertaking the capital improvements that are necessary on our own. If we were going to borrow the money to lend to them, I think, now I'm getting my funding sources confused. In any event, we were going to come up with the money to pass along to them. So I think we should be putting the money into the building and also looking at some of the other facilities that are also being neglected as well.
All right. Alderman Braithwaite.
If there are any more lights, I'm ready to move it for introduction, but I can't see if there's-
There is, there are other lights.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to wait, hold on?
Then I'll wait.
Alderman Grover, then Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam, and thank you, Alderman Tendem, for your good thinking on this. I do want to know, in the, if we're going to introduce and hold these two agenda items and for a quick, deep discussion over the next two weeks, would an alternative that puts our performing arts groups in a downtown venue, would that be the best-case scenario from Piven's perspective? Is this, would they be able to, with other arts groups, commit to this? It's entirely consistent with the Evanstarts proposal and report, and it seems like, I don't know if we're this nimble to be able to, or Piven is this nimble, to be able to make an about-turn on its vision for itself and our vision for the Noi Center. But I think it's a really interesting idea. I don't know what we can accomplish in two weeks, but I am glad to let you drive this bus for two weeks.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, one procedural. The lease agreement is for action tonight?
Well, we've been asked to deal with them together.
Okay.
We don't want one to get away from the other.
Right, right. So my question was, do we hold one and move the other? What do we do?
Do the same to both.
Well, we, Mayor Protam, members of the council, it sounds like you'd like to introduce the ordinance. And if you're going to introduce the ordinance, staff would recommend that you hold the resolution.
Okay.
H3.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So that whatever the direction is, if you're coming back in two weeks, we can deal with the lease at that point.
Okay.
Because it's a resolution. It doesn't have to be, right?
I understood that, that's why I asked. So I'm going to move to hold that. Is that correct?
Well, no, because there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor, okay. Then, my second question, which we can address, is, Alderman Tendem, could you just describe, again, who the parties are that you're going to bring together? And the, can you flesh that out a little bit? And what, are you thinking of a location? I mean, how much thought have you put into this? Frankly, I haven't heard anything about it, so I'm curious.
Well, I mean, no one has until tonight. Although I did have a long conversation with Leslie Brown, the executive director of Piven, this afternoon. And so this would not be a surprise to her. I also did discuss it with our city manager today. I think that anyone with an interest in the performing arts should be brought to this table. I think, I would like to think that we could move very quickly, very nimbly, on this. I can certainly, I have the dates available to open, to accommodate anybody, any group. Like I said, there are three major players, I believe, as far as theater arts in Evanston. And that the, but I think it's also too important to invite the chamber and the, and foundation, as they might be very critical in helping us promote this. and the, and foundation, as they might be very critical in helping us promote this and helping us invest the proceeds that we get from fundraising and other grants.
I, I think that's excellent. What I'm trying to do is get an idea of what product we might have at the end of two weeks.
That's what I would like to talk to you. What can you do in two weeks?
Yeah.
I, in two weeks, we can get, I think we can get commitments that organizations believe this is the right direction, that we are not, that the former, former direction we're going at, at Noys Street Cultural Arts, Noys Street, Noys Cultural Arts Center was, well, well, is well-intended, it, it was not, we could not have probably guessed the end, the result that we would be looking at today, that it has been very divisive, and probably not the best use of that space or that neighborhood. So I, I think it just, what I'd like to produce in two weeks is a certain amount of sign-on by various community groups that might agree with my point of view. It's not that we're going to produce a, a work plan or a, any certainly, you know, it's not likely we'll have funding options, but I think that if we get an investment of, at least a commitment from organizations, I'd, I'd like to believe we can do this.
Can I just say one?
Do I still have the floor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I agree with that, and good luck. I'm, I'm willing to help. I'm sure that Alderman Wilson and Braithwaite, we share the downtown, we'd be more than happy to help, wouldn't we?
And so whatever, whatever we can do, I'm.
I would like to do this with council. I would not like to tie up a lot of staff timing doing this. I think it's important that it's community members and council and other leaders in the city that come together to do this.
I, I will say, my last comment is that I had very serious concerns about the impact, not only on the residential neighborhood that shares the space next to the Noys Cultural Arts Center, but also on the businesses on Noys Street. I don't think it would have been of real benefit to them. And I, I think this is a more appropriate way for us to proceed that would preserve ascend, the essential lower-key artist community that we have at Noys Street and which has been such a success for so many years, and we certainly want to preserve that, so. And I've heard from the businesses along Noys Street that they were feeling very unhappy with, with what was being proposed, so. So thank you. So please call on me, at least, and anyone else for help.
Okay.
Madam.
Just, just to keep in mind that in two weeks, some major deconstruction or reconstruction of ordinance forty-three oh thirteen is going to need to take place, or it's, I mean, we have to deal with it in two weeks. Okay? All right?
I think if you'd like, Leslie Brown has, would like to comment on perhaps their opinion of this, or would you not?
I just answered Jane's question.
Microphone.
Okay, come up here and quickly.
I, I think it's evidently clear, the fact that Piven Theater Workshop has stuck through this for two and a half years, that we have, we've brought our board members to the table to provide pro bono services, that we have actively tried to work with the city to figure out a way to partner. As I said in my speech earlier, my main concern is that there needs to be a plan. This can't just be another way to kick it down the road. I am very open to discussing possibilities, and to be sure, Piven Theater Workshop has not just rested on this one proposal. We have several that we've been working on simultaneously because it is important for us to be able to know where we're going and where we're going to settle. So I, Alderman Tendem and I have talked about getting started right away and discussing the possibilities. So we are open to it, but we do need a plan.
Thank you for being so considerate. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to have, there's a motion on the floor, we're going to have the city clerk call the roll to introduce this ordinance.
Introduce H two.
Yes, yes.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Nine zero.
Introduced.
Okay. I'm.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. I move to hold both of these. Where are they?
Eight R.
H three.
Eight R thirteen.
All right.
H three.
Yeah, H, H two and H three.
No, no, just, just the resolution.
H three, thank you, H three.
I'm. It's been moved and seconded that resolution eight R thirteen be held. I believe that concludes our agenda, and now we have the call of the wards. The first one, who's first?
Alderman Holmes.
No report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I would just like to send my sincere thanks to the city staff who did such a great job at cleaning up the sixth, seventh ward, and I presume part of the first ward maybe, with, after the parade activities. They do a good job every year, and they were right on the spot as soon as the parade passed. So thank you to all city staff and others involved.
Alderman Burris, I have no report.
There'll be a ninth ward meeting on Wednesday at seven PM at the Levy Center.
Alderman Fisk.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I want to thank Farmhouse Restaurant, and I want to encourage all of you to go and make sure that you visit them. They're going to open on Wednesday only for dinner, not for lunch. Lunch will probably start next week. We had the kickoff cocktail party last night, it was fabulous. Should have been there. And it's, it's just going to be a wonderful place. It's a wonderful match for Evanston. It's, you'll all feel at home. I'm ready to move to the farm in Wisconsin and help them grow whatever it is they grow to bring down to their restaurant, but you'll all love it, so please, please come by and say hello.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I just also wanted to acknowledge staff, this Sunday, we, the McGaw YMCA, along with Family Focus, hosted the fifth annual youth triathlon over in the second ward, and just, you know, had an opportunity to go by there, and speaking to the parents, they're all very happy with the change of venue, and our city staff did an excellent job marking off the streets and, and making sure that the kids were safe. So I'm thanking all the volunteers that came out, all the families, it was an amazing event, and we're definitely looking forward to hosting it next year. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Nguyen.
Thank you. I would like to make a reference, I hope it doesn't have to go to the plan commission, to P and D regarding the B and B ordinance. I'd like to make a reference regarding distance and.
Ownership.
And ownership.
Thank you. Absolutely. I think it's an amendment, so we probably can handle it. Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Wait, one second. I just want to, I should have said one thing. I want to thank Ridgeville Park District and Matt Svenkowski for helping with activities at Elks Park on the Fourth of July, and the fire department. It was the only water event in town. They opened up a hydrant and sprayed the water hose, and everybody got wet, and it was great. Alderman Holmes.
Thank you. I just forgot to say that tomorrow night is the first concert in Twigs Park, so Starlight Concert, seven thirty at Twigs Park, so please come join us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else during, Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Rainey.
We are, oh, I'm sorry.
Twigs Park. It's at the dead end of Dodge at Simpson.
Yep. Just drive down Dodge.
Seventies Band.
All right, we are having no executive session, so a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.